For Tuesday, July 18th, 2023, it's a special committee of the whole meeting. First item of business is roll call.
Miller.
Here.
Lancy.
Here.
Beck. Chansett.
Here.
Peiper.
Here.
Sofa.
Here.
Wolf.
Here.
Aaron.
Here.
Lehman.
Here.
Yazzy.
Here.
Malley.
Here.
You're.
Here.
Seron. Vocal singer.
We have the proper commentary to business tonight. Item number two is a reminder, please speak clearly and directly into your microphones for BATV recording, including anyone from the audience that wants to address us. Item number three, items to be removed, added, or changed. You know, Laura, I know that our subcommittee did not have a chance really to meet regarding the safety improvements on round 31. I know that you do have information, though, for presentation. If it's all right with the group to table that item or to spend more time on the other two issues so the subcommittee can meet one more time, or would you prefer to go over that?
It's up to you.
If no one has any objections, I would like to table that portion. Thank you very much. So crossing off item number five for tonight, and we'll do that at the next one.
I think he needs to do, yeah.
So moved.
Motion second, all those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Fantastic.
Dan.
Man.
Similar to what we did last week, Lehman said if we get to 10 o'clock, we should maybe consider winding it up.
I agree. I will say from a facilitation standpoint, it was a little, a little more pressure. But from a...
A good way, though?
Yes. On this side of the neck, it hurt a little more because I felt like I was, yeah. No, but like I said, I would say this much as direction. I tend to watch the meetings afterwards just to catch points that I might have missed. In general, let's be introspective about our own contributions to the discussion in the same way that we are concerned about what other people are saying. We did spend a lot of time trying to get a full consensus, for example, last time. Maybe not a full consensus. Or, actually, no, we didn't have this last time. It's clear everyone is reading the memos. There have been meetings where people have not read the memos and are asking questions that are covered beforehand or could have been covered by staff. We can absolutely wrap up this meeting tonight by 10 o'clock if we stay on task for discussion. And if anyone at any point feels like the discussion is stagnating, please call out your chairman. Sound good?
Is there like a code word like, you know, apple?
Hey, Dan, keep it moving along. Or how about a courtesy flush? You know, something like that, you know? Okay.
May I also ask that since our minute-taker secretary is new, when we do our motions and seconds?
Say your last name.
Say the last name for her. Thank you.
Okay. I'll stick to that. I think it's a, it's a very good idea. All right. Moving then on to item number four, matters from the public. These are for items not on the agenda tonight. Anyone have anything to address? No one's online? Okay. All right. Moving on then to item number five then, which is the discussion of concepts for dam removal and the depot pond preservation.
Can I just give a little bit of preface to the discussion? Just want to talk about where we are at with regard to this project. The city in the Park District hired Hitchcock Design Group to create a master plan for the Batavia portion of the Fox River corridor. As an initial matter, because it's so crucial to the rest of the plan, the city and the Park District have been trying to arrive at a consensus about a general configuration of the river and pond once the low-head dam is removed. We expect that simply removing the dam will drain the pond, which according to community feedback is an undesirable result. So to maintain the pond, there are two very different alternatives that have been, we've reduced to those two for consideration. One that we call Option A, an estimated $4.5 million project, would construct a berm from Dock Island to the west bank of the river and uses a pumps system to maintain the levels in the pond. Option B, estimated at $14.5 million, would replace the current dam with rock weirs tall enough to divert the river water and to maintain the pond. At our last joint meeting, the Park District shared that they unanimously support Option B. The council in that discussion, while I think we only had eight members in attendance that night, seemed split, and due to the relatively low number of council members in attendance that evening, decided to postpone making any decision about which option that they would support. So tonight's discussion is about whether we might be able to find a path forward on this project. One of the suggestions that I was going to make, and you can take it or leave it, is just to go around and have each one of you state which option you prefer and why, or if someone else has already stated that reason, you can say, you know, I like Option X for the same reasons that Alderman You're presented. But I thought that might be a good place to start to see where people stand in the beginning of the discussion.
Agreed. I do think it's a wonderful idea. If there are no objections, then...
You have a question. There were some open questions from the last time that people had about what pumps would be like, what they would sound like. Do we know if any of those open questions have been answered?
No, I don't believe that they have.
And we know who is like asking or who's finding out the answers to those questions, I guess, between you and Allison?
It really would be with Hitchcock Group, and they were present, so I can follow up with them to see if they have, you know, identified answers to those questions. I think there was additionally a question, are there other cities of where that application has been used to kind of look at what the, you know, long-term experience with those mechanical things are?
I don't remember all of them, but I know that that's important to discussions between for some people on council, so.
Enough there to prevent someone from making up their mind?
Not me. I can't speak for everybody.
I will agree with Alderman You're, not me.
And for very different reasons, as I said.
I believe so. But we agree on that.
I always appreciated the discussion that came after the rundown. I know Alderman Brown used to do that, just went right around the table. I think that is a good idea. And we started with that corner. Hate to put you on the spot, Keenan, do you feel prepared to?
Always the first one.
Well, I mean...
Can you use the microphone? Sorry.
In Smash class, I asked for a different seat because I didn't like to be the first guy in the front.
He's just taking his time trying to formulate his thought process.
I'm not. I'm for, I don't even remember, it's been so long.
Option A is the berm across Dock Island to the west bank, and Option B are the rock weirs.
That's the one.
Rock weirs?
No.
No? Option A?
I am for Option A, besides the fact that it's much cheaper, besides the fact that it opens up the river to environmentally flowing better, which I don't, I'm not going to say it as pretty as Abby does. I still think that there is some sort of natural rock formation that would give us what we're looking for without having to spend all of the money. I do think that I do prefer nobody to have anything in the river because again, it's, I don't trust that whoever is in control of the river will clean it, will move things. Whereas if basically the Park District was in control of everything at the depot pond, which is what they said they wanted regardless of, that's the only thing they cared about was saving the depot pond. That's, I want them in control of the depot pond and leave the environment to sustain itself. There's a whole bunch of other things that I would love to say, but I just, I'm ready to vote on this.
I like, I was on the fence. Now, I wasn't here in the beginning of the discussion, so I literally got two options. But I think given the two, I'm an Option B vote right now. I think it's time, something transformative like that is, you know, this town's due for that. I do think, though, it's, it's very dependent on what we do after the major infrastructure change, right? So all the things, all the amenities and everything that we talked about, obviously those are super enticing, look awesome for the community, you know, the pass going on and off the river. I mean, that would just be totally transformative for the, for the town. If those things don't happen and it's just like, save the pond and we put a rock weir in and then it's, you know, all, everyone's hands are up, who's going to pay for this? Who's going to pay for that? That's, I mean, obviously, we're going to have those conversations. But even given that, I think it, you know, given these two options right now, doing the math and all that impact on community, I think positives outweigh the negatives for, for Option B. So that's where I would be.
Dustin.
I've been thinking a lot about this lately since I'm kind of playing catch-up a little bit. I'm still on the fence leaning towards A on the premise that it is obviously cheaper. I think you could still add a lot of the amenities that B would offer in the A configuration. But I do have a lot of different questions I want to pursue before making a firm commitment. The biggest one probably being getting the Army Corps sounding data of what the river will look like in a post-A scenario to kind of get a better feel for the impact upstream. Beyond that, I do acknowledge that B has a lot of quality of life, you know, avenues for it. I actually went down to Yorkville this past weekend to look at their rock weir. It is a very nice amenity. There are a lot of people enjoying it in kayaks and even like inner tubes. I have suspicion whether or not it will bring in enough investment both through tourism and just local property taxes to really pay for itself as an investment for the town. I'd like to kind of see that aspect of it, especially since we have a case here of Yorkville, where they, did they see any like improvement in their local economy that can be attributed to their rock weir? Which considering it was built in 2007 is going to be difficult to parse because of the recession immediately after that. Other than that, I also lean towards A for the environmental benefits. I'm curious to see what the current river health is in our neck of the woods, as well as if we did go with Option B, are there any, like what you might consider reservoir management mitigations we can have to deal with some of the problems that reservoirs like that deal with, like oxygenation issues and, you know, sediment buildup issues? Because if we do choose to have a reservoir, it seems important that we manage it like a reservoir lake to, you know, ensure that, you know, it's, it's, that itself is an investment. And it'll also help the pond. And the pond in both cases is probably going to need some more active management, especially if it's closed off. I'd also like to see lifetime replacement costs for both options. I know a rock weir ideally shouldn't need to be replaced anytime soon, but over, you know, what is the actual timeframe of maintenance? And, but the biggest one probably being the pumps, how much is that going to cost to replace in 20, 30 years, however long the lifetime on those are going to be? And if that's factored into the current calculations? And one final point, sorry I'm bringing up a lot here. These proposals were 2018, right?
I think it's earlier than that. I mean, it's, it's 2018, do you think? I thought it was 2019.
2019 was the ones I think you see.
Yeah.
There were even ones even before that.
Yes.
That those, that these play off of.
Yeah.
It's been a long journey. Are those numbers, have them been updated to now?
No, have not. So in all likelihood, they're 20 to 50% higher.
Good to know. So that's, that's my position, a bit drawn out, I'm afraid.
Alan?
Get my mute? Okay. I've kind of always been of the thought that the, the less we put back in the river, the better off it is. I always have kind of, I guess, leaned towards A, having the pond be a separate pond and we figure out how to manage that, realizing that that cost spread out over a long time probably brings it closer in line to what B would cost. And I guess the fence that I still sit on is the, the fact that B actually does provide some other use or draw to the river. And I think it would definitely, you know, I said it earlier, it would transform the river through downtown. The one thing we can be assured of is the river is not going to get any wider than it is now. That's really about the only thing we can say for sure. And that comes back, all the way back to the first time I remember discussing this when I first got on the council, when we voted about taking the dam out. I really feel like we do need to make this decision and we need to move forward. And if, you know, we decide that the best thing to do is, you know, A or B, whichever way we go, we have to stand behind that and make the commitment that we are going to maintain it as we move forward. So that being said, I think I lean towards, more towards B, just because I think that will provide the best thing for downtown and the river as it progresses through downtown. Thank you.
Okay. So I'll preface this by saying to rebut anybody who says we need to look at this as a hundred-year plan and not something short-term, I am looking at this as the long-term, and nobody's ever going to convince me to vote for Option B, ever, 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 ever. Option A will maintain the pond at all times. The pond is what allegedly defines the downtown Batavia, not the river part. It's the pond, that's the depot pond, and that's the part that I believe should be focused on the most. Also, in terms of amenities and transformative values, if you look at all of the mock-ups and the various things that they show, the only thing that Option B provides that Option A doesn't is some rock weirs. Otherwise, all the other things along the, along the banks and the various other options that can be provided, all are maybe 90% similar between the two plans. I've also spoken with several people who say I'm never going to kayak down that in my life. I've also thought about that and how many, so I'll speak for the, the silent majority instead of the unsilent minority, which always seems to happen at some of these meetings, is the unsilent minority is very vocal, but the majority doesn't ever say anything, and then they wonder what happened because they never said anything. And I just don't see the majority saying for the extreme amount of increased cost that it's worth it to have some rock weirs when everything else can be similarly provided, and the pond can also be constantly at the same level. It'll provide more of a year-round situation. It'll be able to be frozen much easier because you're not going to have a natural river flow going through there. So it'll actually provide more year-round opportunities in the downtown pond than it currently does. Also, when the, we have droughts such as now, you look out at the pond, it's not exactly attractive. If you have the pond impounded, then you will maintain the level as the diagrams show, it's six feet all around at all times. I just believe that the pond should be the focus. I don't think throwing some rocks in to create a little bit of whitewater is worth the extra $10 million. And usually I don't harp on the environmental situation, but that's an added bonus in going with Option A for anybody who wants to consider that. And I do believe this does focus on the hundred-year plan because 100 years from now, the pond will still be here then. That's it. Option A.
Well, a lot of people have already said for what I'm supporting, and that is A. Again, it comes down to the environmental and allowing the river to flow freely. The amenities are essentially the same that were presented to us for A, or the potential amenities are exactly the same with the exception of adding some rock weirs. As noted, the rock weirs that are down in, and I've lost it.
Yorkville.
Yorkville. They've caused some destruction where they need to have an investment to restore them again, and it was put in 2017. So what is that, six years? And they're having to invest more money to save their rock weirs. Yes, either one is going to have long-term cost with it. I just really feel that with the cost that is going into it and then also with the long-term having to preserve it, I really think that the investment is a best for our community.
Pretty sure I've said, said all these points before in the previous couple of meetings we've had on this. But I do realize that I don't think we've actually had engineering studies done on either of these options yet, right? They're still just in the design concept stage.
That's correct because it had been previously noted that doing two engineering studies would be a pretty large expense.
So even whatever the Park District and we decide on, we could still get to the engineering studies and realize that it would have to change or the cost could be very different. So realizing that these are still just concepts, I appreciate that both A and B do improve the river environmentally. The, the understanding is that A would improve it more than B, but that B still is causing improvement for oxygenation and for the fish and wildlife. I, being somebody who enjoys being outdoors very much and being in, along rivers, I really like the idea of B for our community. I think encouraging people to be outside whether, whether or not they're on the river or beside the river or throwing rocks in the river or walking around the depot pond that we hope to maintain is good for the environment because it causes appreciation for the outdoors. So anything we can do to encourage people to be outside more, I am huge supportive of, supporter of. Realizing we are the farthest south community of the tri-cities, I think provides great opportunities for those who do enjoy watercraft because Geneva and St. Charles will also have to deal with this sooner than later. So if we can be thinking forward with that even more so, realizing we want to encourage people to get in the river and come all the way down to Batavia and get out here and not just get in the river and stop in Geneva because Batavia didn't have, doesn't have much to offer them, and even in the way of like, you know, what, what we're building up economically even on our riverbeds and our commercial district. But, so I'm hopeful that that is in our strategic planning also, and that's going to be, we're talking decades-long thinking here. I'm, I've said this in other meetings, I'm still, I'm not an engineer, but I'm hesitant about the pumping system. I know Hitchcock is not an engineering firm either in that they're just design concept, but they have not relieved my fears of, or my concerns, I should say. I know golf courses and stuff were compared, but golf courses aren't typically pulling from a river that is constantly changing its flow also. So I'm not sure how we're going to pump into a pond from a river that will experience drought and stuff itself. And then if the pumps go out or we're in drought, then how long until the pond empties? These are all questions I have that I don't have answers to, but they're my concerns. So I know there's concern about the price difference between A and B from the numbers we are currently looking at. My understanding is over a 20-year period between the two for a $300,000 house, that's one meal at McDonald's for a family a year, price difference. And the nice thing about what we're dealing with here is that it is unlike the garbage contract, which we were talking about last night, which is a set price. This is dependent on people's different income levels and their property taxes also. So, so for an average family of a $300,000 house, it's not that much money a year over the 20-year life of the loan, as I understand it. So as things stand now, I'm in favor of Option B and, but I under, I appreciate everybody's thoughts on this.
Option A. That's it.
All right, I'm up. Unfortunately, I was unable to make the meeting the last time when this was discussed, but I did watch the video. And definitely wanted to add my two cents. At that time, we hadn't had rain in a while, and that river was looking pretty thin. The reason I bring that up is we cannot look at this as a bubble, like this is just a Batavia decision. That river there is going to, if, if our neighbors to the north keep the impoundment, we're going to have a stream and not a river. And then when we do get drought, you know, we, we know we got climate issues coming down up, down the pike here. The other thing is we've always talked about the river as being an asset. And I think if we went with A, we would diminish, we would, we would be diminishing that asset. Now think of this, you know, well, we got this garbage issue where the two towns to the north got stickers and we don't. What if they kept their impoundment and we let it go? People coming down the bike path are going to go through, you know, start up in Elgin, South Elgin, St. Charles, where they do, they are planning to do some recreation on that river. What happens that they, they keep the impoundment, Geneva keeps the impoundment, then you get to Batavia and you got this little stream? I like to think of it as, it's a river by the river with lakes when we have these dams on, because we got a big body of water here because we have an impoundment. If we did not have that impoundment, we would not have that. And if we don't have it, but everyone else has it, I'm sorry, that would not bode well for Batavia. That would cost the, the property owners and the taxpayers of Batavia immensely for 100 years. So it is a 100-year plan. I fully support B because of the options, because it, it maintains the asset that we've all talked about in the strategic plan, that this is a value to have this river here. We are putting a, taking a big risk to take that dam out. Now, I agree there, you know, there, there could be some more environmental benefits, but the weirs would still provide significant improvement and environmental benefit over the current situation. So, you know, the environmental argument doesn't, you know, is not strong enough for me to support something that would put at risk one of the greatest assets we have in this town, an asset that we've been talking about doing more with. So, you know, we can't decide this in a bubble, the, you know, as we are going to see more and more climate change, I would rather have more water stay here than, than pass through this town in a small stream. The, the other piece with, you know, Dustin, you bring up some great points on maintaining that, the depot pond. There was a lot of time spent during that last meeting talking about pumps and stuff, and I thought, well, yeah, pumps would be an expense. Actually, when we first looked at this, I thought, why do you use pumps? Why don't we use windmills to fill it? But that would be a little more involved. But there, there's a lot more to it than just pumping water there. You're right, a reservoir, a sitting body of water that's having no, you know, just more water added to it, there's, there's surely more maintenance to that, and we're, we're not aware of that. So in a nutshell, I am adamantly opposed to A because I think it would be giving up one of the greatest assets we have in Batavia. And one, one thing that we have been talking about developing more since I've been on this council, and our strategic plans have shown that. So I'll never do A, Chris.
I'll never do B.
Yep. And so you and I can cancel each other out, but... And I'm not so sure your silent majority agrees with you. Because I know a lot of people that love Batavia the way it is and would not like to see a river turned into a creek.
But they're looking at removing all the dams, low-head dams.
We have the option to have weirs to keep an impoundment. You don't think all the other towns have that same option? Of course they're going to do that. They may not, but, but we risk. They may not, but, but we risk. If we're the first ones to do it and they don't.
Real quick, just for a little history for you guys, the impoundment of our dam only affects the river north into Geneva, just north of the island at Fabian Forest Preserve. So it only goes, I think it's about 800 or 900 feet north of the Fabian Parkway Bridge. That's as far as our dam affects the river level going north.
Yeah, so basically, if there would be a so-called lake on the, an impoundment in Geneva still, and then you'd be, go to a stream at that point?
Kind of on that point, I do wonder if our decision would likely affect Geneva and St. Charles's decisions, since having a, a rock weir amenity would likely encourage him to also have those amenities to get that chain to network effect, where if we just had a regular, you know, dam release, that would kind of release him to say, hey, we probably don't need to add this whole extra thing either. I wonder if we would, if we would, being the first ones to do this, effectively set a trend. There's no guarantee of that, of course. Because I know.
Approval by DNR. There's also an approval that needs to be provided by the Army Corps.
Many agencies.
To put that, many agencies.
The permitting process is, is lengthy.
To that point, Dustin, St. Charles has indicated support for having something for a, an impoundment because of the fact that the dam in St. Charles affects the flow of the river at least two miles north of it, and there are a lot of homeowners along that, and it would have a dramatic effect on, on the river in St. Charles. It's a much larger impact than, than ours has from a distance standpoint.
Potawatomi Park, as, as one of them, sort of relies on that. There's, as I mentioned before, there's a stretch of water right by Red Gate that Olympic teams practice on. There's, there are a lot of things happening in terms of the politics, the, the amenities, just the environment, but every town has different planning. St. Charles has set aside a couple of pennies a year for many, many years and had to build a bridge all by themselves. They're the only one of us that did that. We all talked about it, but they're the ones that really, really did it. For, for history's sake, Your Honor, the Red Gate Bridge and, and Prairie Street Bridge are because St. Charles were, were savers. They took their time, they set aside the funds, and over the course of many years, and then they had a bonding issue. We've talked about doing that. I've been here 13 years, we have not set aside a place to do that. So we've not been saving for it. You know, a couple of pennies here on the tax bill per year, we weren't doing that. So if we're going to do this, it means that we have to bond for it.
Yep.
Also, perception-wise, let's think about, you're talking about Yorkville, you're talking about St. Charles and Geneva, and, you know, I'm not exactly great with numbers, but far wider portions of the river than the small width we have here in Batavia.
The vista will appear different, yes, that is true.
It is definitely wider. But yeah, it's somebody else's turn.
Yeah, I'm sorry, we got off track here. Thank you. Mark, so you want your option A? Two votes for option A?
Yeah, as, as you know, I don't have a lot to say on this. Just, yeah, so some of this has been, I will try to avoid the things that have been mentioned. The Park District, by the way, hasn't committed to doing anything with those extra amenities. They asked Hitchcock, hey, what else could we do? And they haven't committed to doing anything. So option A may get you a pond and a river, but then nothing else, because if they don't have the money to spend on anything else, they're not going to do anything else. Option B would immediately get you a pond, and they would always be full because of physics, and a, and a whitewater thing. This is not, this is not the Colorado River, this is not dangerous, this is a, it's six feet over like 600 yards or more. So this is not a dangerous thing for anybody that's worried about, about that side of it. I mentioned this before, this river is going to shrink a lot. Tony brought it up a little bit. It was bad when I was running and I was going over the bridges and, especially the new ones in, in Fabian, the water was like that deep, and that's still with a probably three-foot impoundment. I don't know what the, I don't know how it breaks out, but the river was, was low up there, and we already know that it's going to shrink by 100-plus feet, and the depth is going to go down at least a foot. And I paddle the river. Tony's right, it will, it's, it will be, it won't be something that people will be able to paddle on. They will not paddle down to Batavia because it will be unusable. Somebody asked me a couple of weeks ago before the rain, hey, I wanted to go paddling on the river. I said, don't, you're just going to get stuck. It doesn't, it, there's no flow and it's too shallow, and I have a kayak that drafts a few inches, and I wouldn't be able to kayak, and I wouldn't do it. So under normal, normal everyday rainy conditions, it will be too shallow to use, it's, it just, it won't be a usable river. There are people, I hear people in the, in the summer from my deck using their jet skis out by the boat, by the boathouse that the Park District has. That won't exist, there will be no ponding, those people will not be here in Batavia doing it. I don't know if they're Batavians, I don't know if they're from St. Charles, Elgin, Geneva, I have no idea where they're from, but they're not going to come here because they won't be able to do it. It doesn't exist, it won't exist anymore. These are things to keep in mind. Alan's right, this, it affects north of the windmill. I've been up there, and there's stuff, like when it gets into a drought, that it's like, wow, I never knew that was there. And it's like, it's two feet below the surface, stuff that like I never even, I paddled over when it was like normal conditions and never hit them, and then all of a sudden I see two feet of concrete that's like in the middle of the river, that'll be even worse. The pond, weirs will create the pond 100% of the time. Without pumps, it'll be 100% natural, depending on how you look at natural, it'll be 100% natural 100% of the time, because it will always be, the river will always be at the top level of the uppermost weir. So whatever that level of that weir is, is what the level of the pond will be. This is an investment in our town, no, no different than the moon earth. So we can talk about being cheaper, we could have put a road in on River Street, be cheaper, and we'd have a road. And it would be no different than any other town around here, because we'd have a road. And Alderman Chanza and Alderman Wolf were on council at that time and made that decision to make an investment in Batavia, and it's something that we cherish as Batavians, as council members, that it's like, this is something special, and we're here fighting all the time. How do we make this better? What do we do differently? How do we continue to make this better? This is an investment. This is not a business investment that some of us make in our lives, that it's like, hey, what's the ROI? Is it three years? This may be 200 years. I have no idea what the ROI is on this, nobody does. It's going to change the, the character of, it's going to improve and change the character. I'm not going to say improve, because I don't know what you think, while I do know what a lot of you think, but I don't know what everybody thinks. It changes the character, it gives us something that, there's only one other town around here that has that. This is not just a Batavia draw, this is a regional draw. You can have a pond. The pond is not a regional draw, it's a thing that's cherished by Batavians, having some, some sort of investment in the river that brings something different that is unique in the area. I paddle all over the place. Other than Yorkville, there's nowhere in Illinois that I can do this. It just doesn't exist. So people will look for that. And if St. Charles, with their preferred plans, do it, and if Geneva's like, eh, we don't want to be left behind, and they do, and then we don't, people will paddle to Geneva, they will get out at Geneva, they'll go to the restaurants, they'll go to the bars, and then they'll go home. They won't bother paddling down to Batavia, because it'll be like, that part of the river isn't usable for that recreation. Not everybody paddles, I get that, I mean, but, you know, not everybody takes a paddleboat onto the, onto the pond either. I mean, it's, if we, if we do, if we do things for the, because of what we do, then there's, there's a lot of things in this town that would never get voted for, because, well, I don't do that, and I mean, you know, I have friends that don't drink. Well, I don't care about River Street, because I don't drink. Well, that's not how we're supposed to act as, as, as a council, we're supposed to act on the, on the, on the choices that are, the citizens and voters in. And we did a survey, the Park District and the city did a survey out here at Pegbon. It was overwhelmingly for B and E, which are essentially the same thing, is the way that, that people voted. Citizens, whether or not you want to take the, the advice or the counsel of the citizens in my ward that live along there, they sat out there and petitioned people walking down the path, jogging down the path, and asked them, hey, showed them all the options, and overwhelmingly, the people I've got, sent to me a few hundred signatures of people walking, whether they're from Batavia, Geneva, Elgin, wherever, that said, oh yeah, B is a really cool option, I would love to see that. And, and that's, you know, take it for what, for what you want. I know people on this council have said, hey, you know, people are starting to complain that we're not doing A, or we have the, you know, I don't agree anymore with what's going on with One Washington, and, and votes got changed. We don't have One Washington place, maybe because of the fact that citizens spoke up and really started to question us. You can all answer that inside your heads. Like I said, the moon earth, a regular road is cheaper than a moon earth, no brick, faux-brick crosswalks is cheaper than just painting some stripes, but we do these things to make our town special. We do these things to differentiate ourselves from towns around us. And the last thing, and this is not a reason to vote A or B, it's kind of a question. Between us and the Park District, we have 19 votes. Is this a one-to-one vote? Is that, is there like anything that says?
Your two bodies, no, but your two bodies and the two bodies are equally part of that agreement, and so the idea is, can these two bodies come to a consensus on an option?
Okay, thank you. I don't know, I don't know if that's up for discussion more than that, other than...
You can push the issue with the Park District if you want, but I can guarantee you that that's not the way that they see it, and so we could, it could possibly, you know, and kind of end the project, and because they'll, they'll feel like, from the get-go, why should they even have a say in it if there's 14 of you and it's just going to be whatever you want?
Unless that the votes swung in their favor, I guess. That's my point, is that, and yes.
They feel outnumbered. They've mentioned that to me, that it's very important to them that this be seen as one body and the other body, and we need to come as a consensus on this, that if the city council were to come to a different conclusion than they did, and they said that because we have more members in our body, our vote outweighs yours, that that would definitely be a rift in this, in this project.
So what's their view on economic contribution, then?
We haven't arrived at that.
Yeah, I bet you I know what it is.
Yeah.
So that's my thought on that.
I'm, I'm not sure.
Economic contribution is coming from the taxpayers?
There's two, there's two bodies.
It's the same amount of money that the taxpayers, wherever it comes from, it's the same amount.
Some of us have the ability to bond more without going to a referendum, though?
We could, if we don't have to go to referendum, we can do the bond without a referendum and then charge the Park District, and you just, it's, it doesn't, again.
Rabbit trail. Let's get, let's get everybody.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, one more vote, we have two more votes to count at least.
Yeah. That's it.
My turn? All right, well, I apologize for being late. It appears my family is understaffed as well as the rest of the world.
I can, I can sympathize.
So I don't know what other comments have been made. I don't know where we started. I'm very torn on this one. I've gone back and forth, I, I see benefits in both sides. I am leaning more towards B now. Laura, a lot of the information that you sent kind of indicated it was what I needed to see environmentally, and then the concern about climate change, river levels, and all that. I think my vote for the current time is B.
Did you send those materials to me as well about the environmental impact of option B?
Yeah, it was the one that I believe Abby had asked the question about the IDNR scores, the two difference, and that B had less of a positive impact and could, could result in our funding being reduced by a factor of 15%.
But I recall that was the case, it would be reduced by 15%, correct?
And that's just, you know, really looking at it from the 30,000-foot view, is that because we are putting something back into the river, it is not as positive of an effect, particularly for the fish passage.
Oh, okay. I thought it was the impoundment side of things in terms of the chemical health of the river.
Well, the impoundment prevents the, the fish flow, so I, I think it might, it might be similar, similar issues. It doesn't have as positive an impact on either safety or the ecology of the river as A. But I'm sure that the free flow is another impact of it, because they're probably, with the impoundment, would be, prevent some of the upriver sediments from free-flowing through those rock weirs.
Yeah, I think it's, it's about, it's the sediment buildup, and the sediment buildup can affect the oxygenation. The, having a, having a step weir, which is a step dam, which is essentially is a step dam, which is an approved methodology for fish passage. So the fish passage will improve with this, with option B. Option A, obviously fish passage, and then allows for better oxygenation, and that's the advantage to option A.
So we have 11.
I wanted to make a point.
Yeah, I'd just like to share some history. This pond out here was kind of human-created, it wasn't a natural stream. William Van Ortryck, who has got a street named after him, and he's named in the movie 12 Years a Slave as part of the script, arrived here sometime in the 1850s, and he had the idea in his head that this area was right on the edge of the American frontier, and it would be a great place to make windmills, because you'd be right here, and then you could just load them on a train and ship them out. And so you wouldn't have all the big shipping expenses if you made it further to the east. So he got the idea that he wanted to create a second channel of the Fox River, because there was the main channel, and then if you look at early maps, there was a little stream that ran off of that up near the north end of town. So he got the idea that he needed to put some water to work here and build windmill factories. And so the first one he built was the U.S. Wind Engine and Pump Company, which was built down there where the Walgreens and the Fox River Pizza and all that folks has, and some of their buildings still stand there on the south side of the street. But when I was a kid, the, the second channel ran right next to the building here and went down where Walgreens and McDonald's is, that was all water. And then the water went underneath First Street and went down to Shumway Foundry, because they were using it since 1872 as their power source. And so then after Van Ortryck got the U.S. up, then came the, the Challenge up on North Watt River Street, and they built a building that can levered itself over the top of the river, and then the dam got put into place to feed the water down into the center of town, so that it would go to the U.S. Wind Engine and Pump Company, and it would also go to the Challenge or the Shumway Foundry. And so there used to be, where the water treatment plant is now, was the, the dumping of the second channel back into the main channel of the Fox River, and there used to be a railroad trestle down there that, if you were an East Side kid and you wanted to go to the quarry, the short way to go would be to walk across the railroad trestle and get to the quarry. So, you know, all this got kind of changed in the early 1960s when Art Swanson got elected mayor, and he was wanting to build a hardware store down where Walgreens now is. And so he and Francis Yousi, both of them have shared this story with me, they're both dead now, they got the idea in their head that they were going to drive to Springfield and talk to the Illinois Division of Waterways about what permits or plans were given to Batavia to build these, the second channel of the river. So they went down and they had an appointment and they go in and they had some papers that they had at the city, which really didn't say much. And so they say to the director at the time, this is about 1961, what's, what records do you have of the second channel that was manmade that goes through this downtown Batavia? And the response of the Department of Waterways was, what channel? Nobody ever got any permits or permission to do anything but put this waterway through into downtown Batavia. So they said, well, are you assuming you're going to get excited if we go about filling part of it in because we'd like to start a downtown redevelopment and this second channel is no longer being used for water power and it's kind of a dead space? And so they said, yeah, we, go ahead and do what you want to do. We don't have, even have this, any plans of this in Springfield. So then to kind of sweeten the thing in 1958, uh, John Falter arrived in town because he was in Aurora visiting his sister for Christmas. And they brought him through town one night and he saw these people ice skating on the then pond. So he painted that portrait that's on the front cover of the Saturday Evening Post that's at the back of the room. And so that added a little history to this whole thing. And so Swanson and the boys, that city council of 61 made the motion to fill in the pond, uh, the, south of Wilson Street, which they did. And then up came the Jewel Store, which was there and Swanson's Hardware and, you know, eventually things all worked out. The bowling alley, which had been a paper box or bag factory, that was turned into a bowling alley and a lot of neat things happened. So anyway, they got rid of this and as time went on, uh, Peg Bond and Phil Elstrom came to town and they got very interested in the Fox River. And Peg Bond was the chairman of the Batavia Plant Commission for 21 or 22 years until the gentleman who I later defeated as mayor asked her to resign because he didn't like her. And anyway, Peg was a big believer and lover of Batavia, as was Phil. And so, uh, when Peg died, she left money in her will, whatever it was going to take, as I understand it, to build the Peg Bond Center out here on the pond. And then when Phil died, and now the Park District, it's public knowledge, but, uh, he got, he left the Batavia Park District over $2 million to do further enhancements to the Fox River. And so one of the things they're about to do is they bought the one house down on South River Street there on the riverside of the South River and about the 200 or 300 block. And that's about to be tore down and that's going to be more adding to the park along South River Street. And Phil's idea was they eventually could buy all the houses that are on the riverside of river and make that one big park along the river. And that's what his money is supposed to be used for. So we've had all that investment. Well, then, uh, we had an old lumberyard sitting over here where, uh, I'm throwing a blank on the name, the condo are right across the river. What?
Quarry Pond.
Quarry Pond, yeah, Quarry Pond. Uh, they came along and then we had the guys that wanted to build, uh, the townhouses up behind Alderman Er's house there on the river. And those two projects became some of the most popular, almost sell instantly that were ever built in Batavia. When they started that thing up, uh, nobody quite knew what they were going to do, but boy, they built those and they couldn't build them fast enough. And that was the first TIF district that we had because the TIF was used then to put in the street and the sewer and the water lines into that area. So what happened because of that, between those two developments, Quarry Pond and Waterford on the Fox, I guess we call it, there was multi-millions of dollars invested in downtown Batavia by all the folks that now live there or have bought the houses that will live there. The sale price of those properties over there is about as good as you can get in town. I mean, that's some serious money over there. So there, I guess where I'm going here is there's been a major multi-million dollar investment into the area along the Fox River in downtown Batavia. Well, then in 1988, we had an alderman from the first ward by the name of Charlie Gillanwater. And he came up with the idea, well, let's build a river walk through downtown Batavia like Naperville was then doing. And the city council and myself went to Naperville and the mayor over there was a woman, she was a good friend of mine, and she entertained us and brought us over there and we walked the whole thing and everybody said, gee, this is a lot of similarity to Batavia because at the end of their river walk is a quarry swimming pool. And we had a quarry swimming pool. And so the whole idea, so we put it out that we wanted to do it. Well, my predecessor had signed an agreement with multimedia in about 1978, 79 to bring cable TV into Batavia. And they, they paid the city, I think it was $210,000 for the rights to bring the cable TV into Batavia. So the idea was the money was supposed to be used for a public purpose. So along comes Gillanwater with this idea and they needed some engineering and they had Dennis Kentop ready to start construction. So the city council, I guess I had been elected mayor by this time, we made a decision to give the, the multimedia money to the river walk. And that was the original funding to start to build this. And the river walk was a dynamic thing. It took about seven years to build it, but every Saturday and Sunday, there were various clubs, people, volunteers, some came every weekend and just put bricks down or poured cement or clean things up and whatever have you. So I guess where I'm going here is, is that this thing represents a major historical investment in this town. I mean, there's a story about this that's, many other towns would beg to have all this good contribution made to it. And so, you know, I think when Peg Bond passed away, uh, her son called me and said, you know, is there anything you want to do further? And I said, well, they'd like to have a stage on the front of the Peg Bonds. He says, oh, I think mom, but make that a great idea. And he, he made a major contribution to building that stage on there. And that's now the building's name for Peg Bond because she basically donated the money for it. So I, I guess I stand here today as an old timer, was friends with all these people and I'm kind of speaking in, in support of them, that they had this vision that we were going to make this a, a combination recreational and, uh, beautify Batavia and use it for parks and recreation. And then we got into problems like the, the old Challenge Dam that was built to divert water out of the river underneath the Challenge Factory. And for a while there, there were two of those buildings, one is now burned down. The can levered, uh, stones are still in the river that held that building up. But there is, uh, you know, that dam was put there for a specific reason to, you know, power that windmill factory. So we don't need that anymore. And I'm told, I've, I've only seen it once, there's, there's a second dam behind the dam that's there now that's broken, that's made out of limestone and parts of it falling apart. So that it's more than just going out there and taking out that broken dam. There's another thing right behind it that probably should come out of the water too. And then there's the infamous hole that I've talked about that was dug there to cause the water to flow to the east bank so that it would all go underneath the Challenge Factory. And that hole's never been filled in or fixed, so that would be another expense. I mean, I'm a strong supporter that whatever we do, we maintain the depot pond because now, you know, Peg Bond's given a million dollars to have a nice center next to it that we have concerts and fit picnics and festivals. And then, you know, if you come down here on high school prom night or homecoming, you got all the kids standing there having their pictures taken. The weeks before Christmas, family after family is standing down here, having somebody take their picture with their, for their Christmas card. So this thing gets phenomenal use and, you know, it's, it's a historical creation in Batavia that I don't think we should deal with as far as altering it too much. You know, Alderman Er and I have talked several times and maybe we agree to disagree or, or whatever. But I guess I would share this vision that as time goes on, if somebody wants to add some more features to the, to the river as we go north up here, you know, as long as somebody's got the money to pay for them and it's, it's buildable, it's been done so that something can be added, we should put the community in, in place that somebody could step forward in 10 years and add a waterfall or whatever you're talking about doing and do it. I think right now, uh, I would be a little bit concerned as to how much this is going to be costing, uh, from a taxpayer standpoint. Now, my friends up in St. Charles, and I've known them all for a long time, they have a big plan north of the dam up there that's like for $38 million or something. I mean, it's big, but the mayor, just, I've talked to her about it in the last few months. She says they've put it on the shelf and she doesn't think anything's going to happen with that whole thing. It's there so that someday if somebody wants to do something, but St. Charles is having some arguments now about what they're going to do with the old police station and all this other stuff, so they're focusing in on that. As we sit here and speak within the last month, I've had people in here asking me about the Challenge Building over on North River Street. A lot of people, developers, think that is a really dynamite thing for, you know, it'd be a nice addition to the fourth ward, but I mean, it would be, you know, they're looking about really doing some really nice townhouses or apartments up there and maybe some retail, a couple of restaurants. And I've heard various ideas and the guy who owns it, I think is in a situation where he probably wants to sell it because he's, he's got tenants in there, but I think he could, his father bought that property in 1946, I believe it was, and didn't pay much for it. So there'd be a hell of a capital gain, which I think may be part of what he's talking, thinking about. But I think a lot of things could come together here in the next few years for Batavia that's all going to be positive. But I think that having this pond here is just a nice centerpiece for the downtown where you can bring in people all through the years and you can refer to the Saturday Evening Post cover and everything else. Uh, it's, it's an important piece of our history and I think we have to be cognizant of that and watch over it. So I'm sorry for the length of the history lesson, but that's.
It's important to put things in perspective. I appreciate that, that last part. I, I forget that the river walk part adds another chapter to the volunteerism that's down there. I was a senior in high school, I was covering it for the Spectator. Uh, I remember buying bricks and getting a lot of the kids in the year.
I mean, the estimate when they got it done was it was $1.8 million in work that had been largely volunteered and done by private people who stepped up and did it.
In 1992, that was $2 million in donated labor. That is a substantial, a substantial investment. So we're going to put you down for a vote for a B, right? B? No? Okay. The way I counted so far, I'm adding myself to the B column as well, and I will, I will explain myself. Uh, I see a four for A and a seven for B. So that's 11 of us.
Did you count Dustin as an A or a B?
You didn't really vote. You kind of said one.
I counted you as an A leaning towards A. I counted Miller as A. I counted, uh, Sulfah is a solid A until he hears the truth.
You can't handle the truth.
Then I've got, Jazzy is an A with no explanation.
Me as an A.
We'll get there. Um, I have, you as an A as well. You as an A. So that's one, two, three, I'm sorry, one, two, three, four, five.
We know Abby's an A.
Correct. That's a five.
Abby's an A as well.
I mean, I'm pretty sure.
Abby's an A. Abby's six. I have under B.
I got a text message. I haven't asked him to weigh. I'd be happy to if you want me to.
Nancy, Wolf, Leah, Malay, you were, Wolf singer and myself.
Saran's a B.
Saran's a B.
I want to throw something out there. I, I heard a couple of people say I'm a solid B, I'm a solid A, I'm never changing. I will tell you right now, I would be an A if I could be convinced that the river was usable in a, a format that just took out of, took out the dam. So you hear me, I've been for two plus years saying B, 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 B. I would never say I'm never going to switch if I could be convinced of the other side and I felt that the values that people were talking about with the other side, you know, spoke to me. And maybe I'm not speaking to Alderman Sulfah. Apparently I'm not, he's solid A, but it's, and again, it's, it's beyond the 14 of us. It's 26,000 of us and it's the region that we're a part of. So I would never say, I will never move off of B. I, and I would say that on anything that comes up before us. I never come into this with, I'm never going to change my mind and, and privately I've changed my mind a lot based on the conversations that have happened in this room, so.
I have changed my mind several times on this and I purposely have left my voice out of this discussion. I worked, uh, what I thought was years ago towards pushing towards getting the meetings happening. I remember traveling down to Springfield and trying to get the money that the mayor said wasn't there, which still might not be there. So they started talking about it again and they basically said, we're not going through that buzzsaw again. We're not doing that. And I worked election night as a newspaper reporter covering on the radio, having to cover the surprise vote where the thing went down. Uh, and yeah, IDNR said they want nothing to do with data. We will come back when you have consensus. Six to eight is not consensus, it's not remotely consensus. And if the Park District and the, uh, city don't agree on, on something, um, it's very difficult to fight a path forward. So, um, either I need to convince group A to come over to join me on B or group A needs to convince, peel off at least half of us, we do need to discuss this more.
So the issue you'll come up against if the city council decides they want option A is that we're also sort of at an impasse in terms of moving forward on the project to develop the master plan. Because if we can't come up with a vision of what the big stuff looks like, then there's really no path forward for the rest of that project. That being said, remember we've got the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers study, which I just wanted to point out, will study and finalize the hydraulic model for the entire length of the, uh, Fox River, a reach of 10 dams from Algonquin in McHenry County to the Montgomery Dam in Kane County. They're going to be mapping all of that, um, hydrology of what occurs when those dams are removed, but it also connotes that all the dams are removed, right?
Does it include the, the piping underneath the Walgreens too?
The piping underneath the Walgreens. I, I think they're knowledgeable of all of the history of the area.
We've got to open the thing there and send the water.
They've actually been involved with it. I think it goes back about a decade.
Can't forget about that. We had, we almost didn't get a Walgreens because we had to put four huge concrete, uh.
It was just all filled in.
Yeah. Because we were going to, Walgreens was going to crumble upon itself in however many years and they got a 99 year lease and that was not going to be appropriate.
They're going, they're not going anyplace.
So the reason that the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers is conducting this feasibility study is that if it does show that, um, removing the low head dams improves the safety and ecology of the river, which it probably will, right? Um, the next step in that process will be to, um, create a federal program offering assistance for the removal of those dams. So then you'll have the federal money and you will have the IDNR, uh, program. So if we don't have a project with the Park District, then we will possibly lose out on those funding sources to assist us with removal of the dam. And Gary, am I outside the realms of possibility that just the removal of the dam and rest, bank restoration is a $2 to $4 million project if you include the engineering as well?
Definitely.
Bear in mind, you're absolutely right.
I have a question. Does anybody know the length of the dam here in Batavia? Cause I kind of like looked at Google Maps and it looks like Batavia has a little bit wider of a river than some of the other communities do. And so, you know, that just kind of takes me, and the reason why I'm, I'm so stuck on A is I'm not scared that it's going to get thinner because it's going to put it back into its natural state. And as the mayor said, there's probably a natural flow of the river that, that by doing, removing of it is going to help move the dam back to the natural flow.
Contrary to his discussion regarding the millions of dollars of investment that was made by the people that thought they were buying a Vista, who will lose it?
I have a comment on that.
That was a question I would.
That's the question.
You know, the challenge, you said, you know, that's being eyed for some, some investment there. You think they would have the same interest if a river was diminished to a?
That's the direction the river would be going.
It is.
The river coming toward the challenge right now, it has forever. That's why that, if you look at where the dam broke, it broke over there on that east side because that's where all the pressure of the river is non-stop. So that's why that, that's the way that is there. So that's why that, that's the way that is there. So there's, there's a lot of, you know, history built into this whole thing.
But that view there, that vista, yeah, yeah, the river will go along, will prevail along that bank there, but it's going to be smaller, significantly smaller.
Nothing wrong with it. There's lots of beautiful, small rivers.
The people that have invested on the other side there are not going to be happy about the pond.
Well, the pond will be there.
Yeah, in either case.
You know, one thing that the state told me in another meeting was, is that the Fox River begins up someplace in suburban Milwaukee, and it flows down, and some of this now has been reduced because of new environmental constraints, but there were, according to them, between Wisconsin and Illinois, from suburban Milwaukee down to Ottawa where the Fox River ends, there were at one point 119 water discharges going into the river every day, most of them water treatment plants or sewer plants, but there were some industries and other stuff, and some of that's made, may have disappeared. But they said that, you know, with modern development standards that we all practice and live by, and that's all the cities up and all the way to the Illinois line and, you know, up to about Port Washington, Wisconsin, you've got, all these towns now have redesigned themselves so they flow their stormwater toward the Fox River. So we now have some new waters coming in that we didn't have maybe 20, 30 years ago. We've got all this, in Batavia, there's no, we're a major contributor to that and ourselves on both sides of the river. So, you know, I think the Fox River is in pretty good stead to have a fairly steady stream most of the time with all the things that are allowed in it. And I mean, the city of Aurora now takes some of it out south of us to drink, but that's, they're the only ones so far that are drinking out of the river, but that's, there's some very interesting things going on with this river and how much water's in it.
I look at, you know, crossing over Fabian Bridge and looking at Batavia there, that would be, that'd be, that lake would go away. It would be, then be a river or a-
About a third of it.
A large stream.
About a third of it, and I don't like us using these words because the word mud flat did not go over well, if I recall.
I think the hydrology study, I can't myself say that I know what it would look afterwards. I mean, I, and I have not seen any expert come to show us what the river would look like afterwards. It seems like it would be important to get the U.S. Army Corps of Engineer report.
I'm no engineer, but I can tell you, it's common sense that it would be smaller if you're not holding water here.
And the study from 2000 or 2002, whatever, showed that. That was a professional study.
It's a broken dam.
Nothing's changed in 20 years. I mean, it's 20 years, it's not 20 decades, it's not 20 centuries. Nothing's changed in 20 years.
So where we're at is that, Chris, did you ever get the-
No, I haven't not done yet. It's a broken dam. It is not holding that much water right now, barely at all. It's a heck of a lot less, it's a heck of a lot less than 40 years ago when I was gambling on it. Heck of a lot less. That's number one. Number two, Batavia does not equal Yorkville, St. Charles, or Geneva, so I don't know why we're even discussing what those communities have or what they think. We are Batavia, and we should not treat ourselves like the poor stepsister of the tri cities. Let's just think about Batavia. How much does a rock weir attract more people to the river? I don't see it. I don't see it. I don't see any, I don't see it, I go by Yorkville all the time. And then, there's a comment made how this will cost Batavia immensely for 100, for 100 years if we have an impound, if we do not have an impoundment. I don't see that. Rock weirs are a regional draw? I'm not really sure about that either, when, we should be thinking about Batavia, and the pond is cherished by this town. Are we worried about what people out of town think about this town, or are we worried about the constituents in this town? And then let's also think about two things with the money, huge elephant in the room, massively more, massively more money, okay? If we do the impoundment, option A, you can still have the Park District move forward with all of the other fine amenities that are, that are available in both option A and option B. Then, as I believe Alderman, you were might have even mentioned, or maybe it was the mayor or somebody during this discussion, a couple of years down the road, who says we can't put rock weirs in later? Because basically, that would be something that we can add in once we see what amenities are there, and we can always add in the rock weirs later. However, the impoundment situation will maintain the pond for good, okay? And I just think that the, these other amenities are things that can be addressed later on, and maybe it won't be such a monetary impact right away. Because, again, I will speak for the silent majority, and if we were to put this out for a referendum, do you think option B would win? The answer is no. We all know that. It would, it would get defeated in a landslide, a landslide. I mean, they can't even, they can't even get school, they can't even get school improvements? It's not, I mean, this is just what I'm saying, is like, I don't think the constituents, the majority, would be in support of option B if they were showing the monetary issues, because it does come down to money a lot. And I know I'm still looking at this, because I don't want to be said that I'm not looking at this as a 100-year concept for Batavia. I am. I'm maintaining the pond with the option to add on things later.
The answer to adding the weirs later, and maybe that's what Gary was about to say, you know, we've talked about things we want to add, like if you want to do, and Gary, you can nod your head if this is what you were going to say, like if we were to do a thing with putting the bike path on the other side of the, of the wastewater treatment plant, and we added the river, we have to subtract, we put stuff in the river, we have to subtract that from somewhere else. You can't add and not subtract. Our opportunity here is that we're maintaining the river flow. If you change the river flow once and put it back to natural, it will never be allowed to impound it in any way again.
Right. We can tell you, if land is eroded away naturally, we can't replace it. If we protect land from being eroded away, it is forever protected. That is definitely a part of the plan. Gary answered that part, and then we'll go to Dustin. Gary?
Yeah, I'm not making any comments regarding option A or option B. You all can take those comments. But I will point out that right out the window, everyone can picture the river right here by the Peace Bridge. The next downstream dam is North Aurora. So hopefully we can all agree that North Aurora's dam, the pool, the effect of North Aurora's dam has nothing to do with what's right out the window, okay? All the way up into Wisconsin, between here and Wisconsin, there's another 10 dams, whatever the number is. The dams will affect the timing of how floods go through, so they are going to affect floodplain and when the peaks hit, but hopefully we also can agree that a concrete dam does not add water to the river, and a concrete dam does not take water away from the river. So if I pour a glass of water in Milwaukee, and I wait two days, the glass of water is still going to flow here. It's not going to get sucked up by a dam, or a dam's not putting more water in. So if we take out all the dams going to the north, and we're in a condition without rainfall, so again, I just told you that the flood, the flood conditions will change because the dams will affect the timing, but let's just say we don't have rainfall, whatever water is flowing by here today in June of 2023 when we had a drought, that's the same amount of water that's going to flow by here in a drought in the future, whether we have a dam or not. And again, we go through the summertime, we go through periods of rain or not rain, it's going to rain in Wisconsin, not raining here. Basically, I would, I would use this right out here as a barometer of what the river's going to look like throughout the course of the season, whether there are dams upstream or not. And I mean, starting right here, Challenge, going all the way to Milwaukee, this is what it's going to look like, except when you get into flood conditions where it's really going to alter the hydrology, hydraulics, not hydrology.
On the other side of the dam, there's more water held there. So if that, if that dam's taken out, there's less water held there.
The pools will be different. I'm just saying, it was described, someone described it as a small, a small, narrow stream, and, and this is not a small, narrow stream.
By comparison of the channel it currently sits in, it will be-
By comparison of the channel it currently sits in-
It will look dwarfed from what you were used to.
Because that's, it goes from a pool to a river.
Yes. And that, that is what we have to reconcile.
That's my, that was my point. I'd use the analogy of it's like a lake. We're giving up a lake to have just a river.
Yes.
Looked at this river slash lake and thought, there's, this is an asset in town and we can develop this, and we can, we included in our strategic plans. We did not.
Apologies. Dustin?
Two points. Would it, I'm not sure if it's fair to say that river depth north of the dam right now is the, necessarily the best gauge from the simple, from the, from the idea that going to regular river flow will have higher flows over a smaller area, or I guess the same amount of flow over a smaller area and would probably wash out a bit of the sediment there now. It might make it more traversable for certain kayaks and more fun to kayak because the river's doing the job for you instead of the placid waters of a reservoir. That's, that's side of it. The other side I wanted to point out was while I was in Yorkville, I actually spoke to a kayak rental person down there. He said he was one of the only ones in town. He said he give out, he ran out about 3,000 kayaks a year if we wanted to get a rough estimate of the tourism draw. And while I was there, there was a tour group, a tourism group, a whitewater rafting organization out of Chicago, so there is a draw there. I just don't know if the, if it would bring in a requisite amount of income to the city to pay for the investment of that extra attend of, probably now, almost $15 million.
Well, it will, it just depends on your timeframe. It will pay for itself eventually based on the timeframe. It may not be in our lifetime.
It depends on definition of what the return is. If you're talking about building a vista that is desirable to a builder who wants to build a $30 million condominium complex, the property taxes on that will be exquisite over time, yes. That's part of it. Then there's the residents that live there, sales tax, but then there's the amount of money that we have to pay to teach those children and to have all the amenities, the city provides city services and whatnot, so you, there are not, I mean, there are expenses that come from it. Those logs that have to be removed, they wash up in the weirs. I mean-
So the other way that we could look at this is, we know Park District is Team Option B, right? If City Council was to look at option B, the question, the next question would be, how does, how do we pay for that, right? There may be those who are option B who decide that the means that are, we come up with for paying for option B are such that we lose people on the option B side of things. So I, like I said, you've got Park District. I don't think we're going to come up with option A and convince our friends at the Park District that they should change their minds.
Yeah, that's kind of what I was going to say, is like, to me, after you spoke, Laura, it was like, a vote for A is a no vote, is a stalemate vote. So we can talk all we want about what option A might bring us or what anything else will bring us, but to me, that's back to square one, back to not making decisions, back to stalemate. You know, so like, I, yeah, that one's, that's tough for me, and then obviously, I get it. I mean, there's things about it, the cost was the first thing I brought up. I think it was my first meeting, I mean, I was taken aback, and then I had some time to think about it, and, you know, I do, I do agree with the long-term plan. I mean, as far as cost, obviously, I hope once we make the decision as council, you know, I mean, you know, at that point, we're on board. I mean, we're, we made a, you know, majority decision in council, so now we need to move on from there and figure out how we're going to pay for it. My, I mean, my understanding was it's going to be a straight tax. I mean, was that-
We have more bonding authority, there's different, there's different ways to pay for it. They had, if they were to try and do some bonding, it limits their ability, it would cripple them for a generation if they had to issue all the bonds. That's just the math of it. We have, we, yes.
Can I make a response to Alderman, Lancy, real quick? I don't think that a vote for A is a stalemate. I don't, because the Park District wants to get something done, just because they prefer something, if they see that- I want to get something done, too. But just, yeah, and just because they may want option B, if they're told, hey, that's just, it's not going to happen that way, we got option A, I don't see why they would go against option A. I mean, they still want to get it done.
It means we're getting into the Park District business, we're not a Park District.
Well, they can, they can choose, I guess they can choose what they want to do, but I mean, the federal money is, is not the Park District's money, I don't think.
Well, if it's a-
I don't think the federal money has anything to do with the Park District.
If it's a joint city-
Now we're taking it out of our hands and putting it in theirs, in my opinion, and it's like, hoping, hoping's not a strategy.
It's a shell game, it's at some point. We're talking about two governments cooperating with each other and building upon what, careful, building upon the rich history that we have here. A vote for A is a vote against the, the Park District's point of view. That is accurate, because we would have to go at it alone, and we need to make a decision if that's what we want to do.
So Dan, you are, and I know you love consensus, and you were talking about that.
I prefer to, I want to know how to get there, because I would-
We're not going to get consensus.
We're not going to get there tonight, in the next 20 minutes.
And we don't always get consensus. And we have eight to six votes, we have seven to seven votes, and the mayor's broken that, it's rare. We have eight to six, we've, we just had a nine to five vote on a consultant. I don't think that we need to sit there and, because I don't think that there's going to be a lot of budging. I think it's, we just need to put this on the next cow for vote and move on.
Agreed.
I mean, and there's, there's an A vote saying, just put it on there. We, we've been talking about it for two years.
Exactly.
We just need to put it on, on the ballot, we just need to put it on our ballot and vote, is my opinion. And if people switch over to A and I lose, then so be it.
I hope that you don't. This, this is a, this is a wounder moment for me, and I'm taking a leap of faith, I'm glad I took the wounder's leap of faith. I lost a lot of political capital on that one.
No, I know a lot.
A lot of it. Intended I'm being voted out of office multiple times on that one. Nobody ever did.
It's a wounder vote, it's a sidewalk vote.
Does staff have enough direction from us, then? Or do you need additional?
Put it on the next cow.
In the form of a resolution that the other government body considers that to be a, a formalization of our opinion? We will need a resolution, then? Okay.
I would suggest we should probably put the two A and B ideas on the city website so people can read them themselves and know what it is, what we're voting on. I think there's a lot of-
Think the communication-
With giant monetary numbers.
We don't know the math, though, we don't know the engineering.
I'll put the Hitchcock Design Group, last presentation, we'll be on.
You know, the last presentation.
They're going to come out and they're going to ask, people are going to ask with the money.
Right away, you want money.
A lot more.
Four and a half to 14 and a half is what we have.
And the numbers that we have, it's $20 a year or $67 a year. That's the numbers that we have right now, that's the best information that we have. And that's all, that's how I would answer if somebody asked me, what's the difference? And I would say 20 versus 67.
We get some of that and more of the engineering put together. It's not going to be free by any means.
And honestly, it doesn't mean it gets done, because if IDNR and others come back and say, sorry, we're not going to allow you to do it, then we get what we get, and then we have to build a berm. It's, this is, it's a decision we're making, it's not, it, it's a vote we're making, it's not a decision we can actually make entirely.
That's a good point. The DNR comes back and says, nope, no more low-head dams, they're out, they're all out. I would be in support of A, A then. That'd be a no-brainer for me, but I am, I am, that my biggest fear, as I said in the beginning, was that other towns keep their impoundment and we don't, and we'd have a smaller, we wouldn't, we wouldn't be holding water in our town, but they're holding water in their town.
They would be.
It would significantly change the view.
Deciding on a concept is a path forward, it isn't committing to the fact that that actually gets constructed. It allows staff the ability to do the memorandum of understanding with IDNR that gets us in the queue for the resources, for the engineering and construction costs that they are going to assist us with, because before us are North Aurora and Montgomery. I think, I think Carpenter's Hill is already in the construction phase, so that would put us in that kind of a queue. What does that look like? That probably means construction, in my mind, 2026, 2027, that's how long these permitting processes are.
It'd be a long one. I was asking for money-
It's a long game.
I was asking for money seven years ago.
Before we, just before we stop, I just want to ask Gary. Gary, do you know how much that dam is actually holding back water at this point?
I don't know, volume-wise, but as Alderman Wolf said, my understanding is the pool goes up by Fabian. Yeah, that's, I think that's, that's accurate.
How far, and it's how far it is. I mean, it's still effective that far.
Yeah, it absolutely, I mean, it's a couple feet below the top of the dam, right? Where, when it's, recently it was a couple feet below it, so four feet as opposed to zero.
Sulfur, that's always what I've been told. I've never studied it, I don't know, but I've always heard-
I didn't know if you had some-
We'll wait to see what the engineering comes back or the studies come back.
Gary, can you see that?
It is what it is.
You have any other issues to discuss regarding this, this evening? Are there any other issues to discuss regarding this, this evening?
One last sort of silly question about Option B. Why did they choose to have the rock weirs north of the existing dam instead of south, such that you need to berm up the Duck Island to create that?
I think it was for a gravity.
Well, it's the safety, too. The fire department did not like the wall there, basically, of the challenge factory and other things. They can't get any help from both sides.
The fact of the case is, the mayor even brought that up.
Power lines on the challenge side.
Good to know.
I guess let's move again on then to item number seven, potential uses of single-bag fee revenues.
Sorry, were there any matters, anybody from the public who wanted to talk about the dam?
We certainly can. Go back. I do apologize, I thought we were looking for council consensus, but we could certainly open that up for public discussion. I thought that was going to be for resolution time. Is there anyone here who wants to address the council regarding the dam issue?
Damn.
I'm not going to swing at that one.
I'm sure we'll get enough at the Cal meeting.
Well, that's typically where we will hear. Okay, I apologize. Now, discussion of the single-use bag fee revenues.
Yes, so the city implemented the city, the single-use bag fee on July 1st. Prior to that, we had done a survey of the retailers to get an estimate of the number of bags that they use, so that we could utilize that information to get an estimate of what the revenue would be. There are three large retailers out of the 16 that did not respond to the survey, so this is not an exact estimate. But for those who did respond, it was about four and a half million bags for a total of $267,000, just to give a frame of reference. And Carolyn Burnham is here from the Batavia Environmental Commission. Carolyn, I've got your presentation if you wanted me to put that up on the screen for you to talk through.
That would be great. So first, I want to thank you for taking your time to listen for another set of recommendations from the BEC. But I also want to say that we worked with the Climate Action Plan Committee as well to kind of flesh out some of the recommendations that we put in our original pitch when we did the single-use bags fee recommendation a year ago. So I'm just going to, we started with a lot of ideas, because you think, well, there's money coming in. A lot of people came with different ideas, but we wanted to kind of simplify that into things that we feel like moves the environmental agenda forward. It's tangible, coming back into the community, and also helps the environment. So the first thing that we asked for, and we asked for that, when we asked for the fee in general, is to create an environmental fund that where the fee is put into and set aside, and we can only spend the funds that are actually available to us. We can't, the goal of this, of course, is zero revenue, right? Or at least decreasing revenue. So we don't want to commit to anything that is long-term, that we, there would be fallout if we couldn't fund the program any longer. So we talked to staff, and I've had conversations with Scott Haynes in the past about this as well. This was in our original request when we did the fees, and that was to help fund the Parkway Tree Program. And so we originally presented to staff to subsidize the 50-50 program. And Scott said, well, you know what? We need a lot more trees than that. So he came back with an estimate of just the number of trees that could be planted in Batavia. And these are primarily trees that, in areas that were developed before, we had a plan to plant Parkway trees. So they're legacy areas that haven't had them planted. So this could be a pretty sizable portion of the single-use bag fee funds. I think the estimate was anywhere from $150,000 to $570,000 in total. So clearly, we couldn't use, plant them all. But maybe we can take a portion of that each year and knock out a batch of trees. And we really think like, this is a good idea, because the homeowners benefit, the city benefits, and the environment benefits. So, but it was a little bit more than I thought it was going to be. So we still have a few more items that we'd like to talk about, with maybe the Parkway Tree taking the large portion of the fee money. We would still like to see more education. And I think what I've seen, just following social media, is that a lot of people know the what, they don't really understand the why to why we're doing this. And I think, number one, letting them know, doing a better job of explaining why, and knowing that the fee they're paying, not the tax, is coming back into the community to benefit the community, I think that will help this whole campaign in general. But there's other, there's other educational things that we can do related to wasted diversion, recycling, and sustainability. This wouldn't take a lot of the budget, though. This would be a small portion. Several years ago, Scott Haynes told me that there was a big problem with contamination in our outdoor recycling bins in the city. So I thought this might be a good idea in the name of reducing the pollution in our city, increasing recycling rates, and reducing contamination, is to maybe pilot some different types of trash cans and recycling bins that have better labeling. You know, and there's a lot of communities that have done similar things. I hope it's not a wasted effort, but maybe if we can find better cans that don't look the same, I go to the farmer's market and I look in there and I'm like, ugh, not even at the farmer's market are they putting recyclables in those recycle bins. So that would be part of, part of one of the items that we would like to do. We can go to the next page. Probably, this last piece is probably a little harder to swallow, because it would take, or more manpower to do. Why we left it in is because in the Climate Action Plan, the Regional Climate Action Plan, one of the things that was pointed out is one of the, the 70% of the greenhouse gas emissions in the Chicago area is coming from building energy. And so one of the ways that we can help mitigate that is by taking efforts to decarbonize homes. And so we, we hope that we can do an equitable distribution of rebates. And I know that's hard. People say that the people that don't have the money aren't going to do these things, but if we find the right things to incentivize, then maybe we can make a program like this work. You know, they have an oven that isn't working, they need to replace their oven, this is a good time to get a rebate for either an electric or an induction range instead, things like that. So it could be for energy audits. Heat pump dryers, they're a little pricier, but you can get them more reasonably than you could a couple of years ago. Heat pump or hybrid and tankless water heaters. Of course, the geothermal will be pretty pricey. Electrical panel upgrades, this is a big one. As people electrify their homes, they may need to update their panels, and that's going to cost money, but it's also going to provide them the means to upgrade to these different items that will help them decarbonize their homes. And then the last item on that is maybe possibly including incentives for contractors to participate in these programs, to provide these products and services. I know that personally, we've been trying to do this for a while, so we've done some of the things on this list. And I had to call a lot of people all over, and they didn't know what I was talking about, right? It's like, what's a hybrid water heater? Or they didn't even know what a heat pump dryer was, so I had to buy it somewhere else. I couldn't get it here. So if we can get our local contractors and our local businesses to get these items, then it benefits everybody. So that's the list of items we have. Do you have any questions or comments?
I'll start. Are we doing council member comments? So I am absolutely in support of the tree program. You know, as you mentioned, it's not something that we would really do in one year, it's something that we can do over the years and identify trees. There's definitely areas within the community, you know, where trees can be added. In addition, I do like the idea of the education. I'm a big proponent of education. I know I've said over and over, people hear me, the farmer's market is a great opportunity to provide the education, you know, even have a different topic every single week. It could be a topic on some of these electrical items. It could be on how to properly recycle. It could be a number of things of composting. And, you know, in addition, it gets the kids involved with that. To kind of take the education a little bit further, you know, what is the thought of maybe kind of incorporating videos on our bi-weekly newsletters that go out? And then maybe have a place with our house? I don't know, and you guys can look into it, but I, to me, it was like YouTube, where community members can access, and then they can look at these videos over and over, whether it be the safety videos or anything like that.
Re-partner NBA TV for that.
Yeah, so someplace where it's housed, where people can go back and refer, and, you know, then it can be passed along and people can look at it. I mean, who wouldn't love to look at yourself 10 years down the road and look at these cheesy videos? I mean, everybody does and laughs about it, but I think that that's another way to do some of the education. The recycle bins throughout the community, I think, is a great idea. It just really pushes, you know, really reinforces where recycling is important here in our community, and it is effective that people do look for the symbols. They're like, I know when I see a bunch of cans together, I'm like, all right, which one do I need to put it in? So people are aware, and it is out there. And then as far as this second one, the decarbonizing of the homes, I think just, you know, maybe we can't do all of them, we can't do, because 200,000 really isn't a lot, and hopefully next year, it's only 100,000. Maybe do a campaign to encourage people to do electric appliances in their homes as opposed to the gas, and really start moving to the electric. I think that's probably out of any of this until people become educated on themselves that the electric is really the way to kind of push people.
Just to, like, manage expectations on the revenue stream, there was a recent article in the Chicago Tribune about the experience that they have had, and revenues have stayed pretty steady during the time that they have had their bag fee. You know, the article went on to say that in, you know, in their retail situations, people aren't making buying decisions based on having to pay 10 cents for a bag. But I think it is good that if we're collecting these revenues, that we do use them for things that have, answer things that are on the Climate Action Plan and the Greenest Region Compact. To that end, I'll just throw out there that we just recently adopted a bike and pedestrian plan, which calls for $300,000 of investment per year in making those things happen, and any of those things are reducing greenhouse gases as well.
Dan?
Sure. Sorry. Thanks. I also support the Parkway Tree Program. I think that that is a wonderful use. We're trying to reduce carbon footprint, no better way than to put new trees in the ground. And the recycling containers, I have the same thought when I'm at the farmer's market and I see the contamination. I was at a baseball tournament in Waukegan this weekend, sorry, and they had one of those recycling containers that had the different slots, like just outside for general use. So looking in the giant garbage can there, there wasn't cans and bottles that could be recycled, they were all exactly where they were supposed to be in the specific containers. And especially, you'll see at airports sometimes, the one over the garbage is labeled landfill. It's just such a clear message, and it makes, it just produces thoughtfulness. So I think those specific containers and Parkway trees would be absolutely, and then maybe these goals down the line.
Oh, I have a question, too, Laura. I was at Jewel today, and there is a sign that said Batavia has implemented a bag tax. I'm just wondering if we could get...
Where was that sign?
At Jewel.
What we just talked about, it is a tax. I mean, it kind of is a tax.
We've provided them flyers that we created that talk about it as a fee. So if you saw something that says bag tax, that's something that Jewel made, and I don't think we have any control over that.
No, I just wanted to know, like, if there's communication or outreach or anything.
Yes, absolutely. We have been in contact with each one of the retailers directly, and we've provided them with informational materials that they can both use on their doors and at the point of sale. I even saw it used at Walgreens, that they were utilizing the ones that we had provided to them.
Okay.
Did we, did we make up a poster for them or not?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, we made up a poster for them.
Okay.
Dan? Yeah, I guess I'm a supporter of the idea that some of this money needs to be returned to those in Batavia who really need it. And we have this organization in town that we've allowed to have an office in this building for a number of years called RSVP, which is called Retired Senior Volunteer Program. And they go out, and I know they buy glasses for seniors that can't afford them, they've paid for some dental work. It's a very well-run program from everything I can see, and I could see where we could ask them to sum some of this money and some of these... I will tell you, in my 42 years as mayor, I've never had as much opposition through email and phone calls and whatever as I have to between the garbage contract and this program. And it's got a public relations problem going in Batavia right now that's not good. And I think if we can return some of this money to the people who have been impacted by it, specifically the seniors who are telling me they don't have the money to pay for the bill every three months and all this other good stuff, I think that RSVP could very easily qualify and develop a list of who those people are, and we could use some of this money to pay some of those bills.
Yeah, I would just say, well, first of all, I wasn't here for any of this or voting on it. I would have voted against it. I do see it as a tax. I mean, I think everything we're saying here is basically saying it's a tax. I'm not going to get into that, but if we have some sort of, I mean, are we going to reduce the plastic or not, I guess is the question? Wasn't that the goal, or was the goal to get money, right? So it's like...
Not just plastic, it's paper also.
Okay, so bags, reusable bags. If that was the idea, and from what I heard from Laura, is that that really doesn't happen, or that's not what the data shows happens, which is what I would have thought, too, is like, nobody sees it as, well, I'm not going to cross that visible line and not go to that store, they just do it anyway and pay the 10 cents. So I think 100%, it needs to go back to something like the mayor suggested, go back to the people, something very, you know, yeah, just for the citizens, so.
Bill and Pramik.
Yeah, yes.
You're saying you hear more opposition to this than chickens?
Aaron?
Do you hear more opposition to this than chickens? The chicken debate? We had a whole separate email box for chickens.
Get into everybody's face because of the bill.
Yeah, and Tim, and I don't remember, hopefully somebody remembers, we said we were going to revisit statistics on this in six months to a year. I don't remember what that figure was, because if this, I stood up there and I said that this is the thing to move the needle. If it doesn't move the needle, I would revisit this in six months to a year, and then, sorry, I would say, stop it, because then it is just, it's a money grab at that point if it's not moving the needle, and I would say, this isn't worth continuing. If the revenues decrease, which is ironically, the objective is to decrease revenues, then we are moving the needle. Trees, 100% support trees. Definitely education, I think, I'm not sure... It's an education campaign within Batavia. I'm not sure how much more we can tell people about single-use bags. It hasn't been said thousands of times over on national media and every other site that's out there. I don't know how much we're going to move the needle spending money on education, but I'm okay with that. I would educate more on these topics to say, here's why you would want to do it. I, across the board, whether it's federal subsidies to oil companies or solar companies or wind companies, I hate subsidies, 100%. Because anything we're doing with a subsidy or rebate to somebody is just taking the fact that somebody just spent a dollar on their 10 bags at Jewel and gave it to a person that just built a brand-new home and wants to throw, you know, wants to change out to a heat pump or something. And they were giving money from the poor to the rich. It's reverse Robin Hood here on a lot of these things. And so that's, I'm not in favor of that. I would ask Groot, and somebody said it, I don't know if it was an anecdotal thing, somebody said it the other night, that, you know, that recycling is a loser, that they don't make any money. And I don't know if that's true. If it's 100% true that they don't make any money, then we can't convince Groot to put, I would say it would be on Groot to put better recycle bins out there that convince people to recycle things. But if they're 100% losing money, then it doesn't matter to them anyway. I mean, we hear all kinds of things about recycling and the plastic bottles. Your plastic bottle is a complete, it's gone. It's never coming back into the system because nobody wants to spend money to recycle it. So I would just plant trees and move on. But again, if we're going to visit this in six months to a year and the needle hasn't moved, I'm going to bring up that we repeal this because it's not solving a problem. It's, it's just allowing us to plant more trees. And not that that's a bad thing, but then we're discharging everybody in Batavia to plant more trees and we shouldn't do that.
At a disproportionate rate?
Yes.
When doing so. Does a quarter per bag raise the needle or move the needle? We're a committee.
It increases the number of phone calls and emails.
For sure. And trust me, I've had quite a few. The only one on that list that doesn't appear to be a thing that I can take home that makes me feel good about doing something good, because these are good things, it's the x-rays at the dentist's office. It's the energy audits. Can you talk more about that? What's included in an energy audit? Because a lot of us could learn more about what we're doing if we did energy audits.
I was hoping my energy audit guy would- But I've had one done.
Yeah, what did you think after you did one?
I thought it was useful. I think they told me a few different things that I didn't already know. And we had mostly energy efficiency items added to our to-do lists. Things like insulation and air sealing. They put a blower on your door and they seal everything up and they watch where the air flows and where your heat losses and your, occur in your building. So I think, I think they expand that though. At my church, they actually go and look at all your fixtures. They look at everything in there and they make recommendations of the type of fixtures to change to. If you're using fluorescent, you need this particular thing to move to this particular LED or this type, maybe you need to go tankless, maybe you need to do a little tankless under your sink instead of the big gas heater. So there's a lot of individual changes that they can recommend to a homeowner from every part of how you use energy and water and your gas. And so they're really helpful. And I think they've actually gotten better even since we did ours about 10 years ago. Because we moved to Batavia in 2011, had the highest electric bills that we've ever had. And you're like, what's going on? We moved to a smaller house too. So we were trying to figure out, you know, what was going on with our house that was different than our other one. So it was, I thought it was very useful and it can give people a plan of action from little to big.
I know this is 10 years ago. Do you remember roughly how much you spent on the audit?
It was about $500.
Which is, that's an investment.
It is.
And for someone who's living paycheck to paycheck, then might be a paycheck.
Exactly. That's why, you know, it's hard for them to do that.
But in order to implement some of those changes, it would absolutely save, would absolutely save.
And they can, and that's the goal, is like, if we do something like that and they can, if they can get an energy auditor or however we want to work this, right? The changes they make are going to save them money. You know, and that's, that's more than 10 cents a bag if we can do it right.
It would be nice if there was a program- That paid for the things that they need to do. Because probably the people who could most benefit from the cost savings because of their socioeconomic status would not then have the wherewithal to be able to implement the things that are recommended by the plan. And we saw this with a plan that CMAP had for a package of energy-efficient, it was some light bulbs and some other things. There's very few people who came in on the LiHeat program who even were interested in taking those things home with them.
Alan, you have your hand up?
Yeah, thanks, Dan. One of the things I thought about this as I was reading through, looking at this presentation for tonight, was one of the things that we talked about when we voted on and decided to do this bag fee was we were trying to reduce the amount of single-use bags. One of my thoughts was, was with this money, whether we do it at the farmer's market or however we decided to do it, if we, you know, sent them out, you know, with having people walk and deliver them, why don't we just have reusable bags made with the Batavia City logo on them? And give one of those to every house in town?
Alan, it's something that we considered early on in the program, but the issue with that is that, and if that bag were to go unused, the energy and carbon footprint of having made that bag is significantly more than the footprint of making a reusable bag. And so our worry was that, and was that we were going to be creating more waste by handing them out than, you know, just encouraging people to use the trove of them that most of us already have.
And my thought there was is, you know, that would send more of, to me, more of a signal out to the public that that's what we're trying to do, is get people to use a reusable bag and not a single-use bag. You know, if those were available and using that as, you know, part of our publicity on, what are we spending this money on? No problem with it being part for the, you know, the tree program. I do have some issue with if we were to take that money and use that to subsidize a rebate for, for other things. Or, you know, just handing that out to somebody that may need it for financial assistance. That tends to present a big problem to me to do that.
So the whole point of this was to bring awareness to the amount of bags we're using in environmental issues. Can you remind me again that the amount of bags that we use in a year?
Four and a half million.
Oh my gosh, just in Batavia? That number should scare us. That should make us just want to really dig into this and figure out ways to reduce the amount of bags that we're using. As a group of people, we, or as a committee, we signed the Climate Action Plan. And I know, I wish Abby was here tonight. She said, you know, that wasn't just something we, to do to pat ourselves on the back, like if we're going to sign it, let's act on it. So just to remind ourselves, like, the whole idea of this was to bring awareness to this issue and to care about our environment. It's not to get money, as many on Facebook would say. This was not a way for the city to add money into our, into our accounts. So let's just set that aside. The whole idea, we would love to get where we were getting zero cents from this fee. At the end of the day, we would love if people were showing up, reusing their bags, bringing a box and putting it in their car. I will say, you know, Trader Joe's and Aldi people are very good at bringing, have always been very good at reusing bags. But even at Jewel now, when I'm shopping there, I see a lot more people carrying in their bags than I did a month ago. So it's working with our community and I've observed it. So I am a big supporter of using the money that is coming in from the fee right now back to environmental issues and awareness. So if that's educational campaigns or trees, any, anything along those lines, I'm very supportive of. And thank you for the research that the commission has done on this and bringing this to us.
And I was just going to ask, what, do we know what the metrics were? That we were going to see in six months to a year? Do we know what those like KPIs were? Or like, how many bags we saved, how much?
The only thing that we can do at this point, the survey that we did, we asked them, how many bags did you use last year? And so they gave us their-
We'll do a year-over-year bag total?
Yeah.
That'll be the key indicator? Okay.
Yeah, I think six months is too short. I would see this as a two-year program.
After two years, I just didn't know what the metric was.
It's going to be hard to know because of the year. I'm sorry.
Oh, no.
The year that we said we were going to do it, but we only have year data from the retailers. So we won't have a full year under the belt when we're trying to evaluate. But I think hopefully, you know, we'll have some indications though. Because none of us wanted to do a fee, but we wanted to see if, and we have a lot of research to show that it was working. It does appear to have plateaued in Chicago, but it doesn't mean it didn't work.
But Stock is the same.
It just means that there's always going to be people that are going to do bags, which is why we didn't want to do a ban, right? We still wanted to give the option to people. If that's something they don't want to do, we're going to still have an option for them.
Like, the culture's going that way anyway. I mean, I only speak for myself and my family, but it's like, I know my wife makes me care, you know, we got the reusable bags. So it's just like, I see a lot of people with them. So hopefully that's just a trend and we don't have to incentivize people with a penalty, which is how a lot of our constituents see it.
Yeah, sure. Now that's it. Success is subjective. I would say this is the most I've heard my neighbors talking about the environment. This is the most I-
Brought awareness.
This is the most I have spoken to my neighbors while in line at the grocery store talking about the environment. The most time I have spent policing the intranets talking about the environment. It's leading to discussions. It's not the worst thing in the world. And if the baseline is that we do drive down some of the bags and we're still making, making a little bit of money that funds some worthwhile programs, I don't see that as being a reason to end the program just yet.
No, I'm just saying, if it doesn't, if it literally doesn't move the needle like Chicago and Woodstock have said, that it hasn't changed the behavior, then we're not really, it's, it's like me going on an airplane paying a carbon tax. It's not, I planted-
It's you taking your private jets.
Yeah. I planted some trees and I'm, it's a bit of virtual signaling if I say that, that I'm like, okay, fine, I'm planting trees. It's not solving, planting the trees isn't taking, it's an environmental thing, but it's not taking bags out of the ocean. So it doesn't actually solve the problem. It, it does, it's nice, but it doesn't remove plastic from the ocean and our water supply, et cetera. So.
But what you're doing is you're paying the airlines to invest in the different types of technology where they're using not the gas to do their airplanes.
I was using there as an example, but not buying, not using plastic bags and planting trees do not have the, they're two different paths of environmental concern. So I want to plant trees, but it doesn't take bags out of the ocean.
No, I mean, I think charging people 10 cents a bag doesn't disincentivize them enough. And I'm not saying we need to do more monetarily. I'm saying, because that would be disastrous in the other direction.
Sure, but from an academic standpoint, what would it take for you to not use a bag?
Well, the problem is, is I would, I wouldn't, I would still shop. I wouldn't shop here. That's the problem. We live too close to our competition.
Fair.
We don't have that luxury.
Yeah. I, since July 1st, in my countless trips to Menards and other stores, I've seen it called a tax. A lot of people say tax. I've seen it posted. But I've also seen a lot of people say, oh, I don't need one. Do you need a bag? Oh, no. Oh, it's 10 cents. Oh, I don't need one. I'd say that's working. Chicago, Woodstock, they might have plateaued, but they reduced. The, I support trees. I'm wondering, you know, we already have a, so does Nick. We already have a Parkway Tree Program. Do we, do we have people not taking advantage of that?
Oh, of course, because they're responsible for 50% of it.
Yeah. But it's-
My parents didn't have one until I-
50% was better than 100%, having to pay 100%.
My parents didn't have one until I told them the program existed.
Yeah.
Yeah. This would be on city properties.
So, but yeah.
It would be on private property and the east.
So it'd be further subsidizing that, that program. So, so I'm not sure if that's the best resource or best use of it. But my point is, the, I'm a little skeptical about us now. If we say this isn't a tax, but we're talking about how we're going to spend this revenue. And we're putting out the message there that the city council is planning on, is raising, is put this fee in place to raise money. That's a tax. And look, they're going to, they're already planning to go spend it.
Did you know it was four and a half million bags? I didn't know that.
I had no idea.
And I'm, frankly, I'm embarrassed. I had no idea.
That does not include-
But we're getting people to use less bags and that's the point. And maybe in a year we find out, okay, yeah, we brought it down, but it's not going any further. I would say it would have been a success because we got less bags that are ending up in the wrong places.
We don't know if it was a direct correlation to the 10 cent.
Yeah, so one quick thing is the, the estimates we came up with were based on streets where we have not had interest in the 50-50 program for a number of reasons. They are areas without trees on them currently. But for things like power lines or other things, we haven't had people apply for them. So they're areas that we would like to see planted with trees, but nonetheless, there hasn't been that demand. So by picking up that theoretical other half, we'd still accomplish by putting trees there where there hadn't been that demand previously.
But they would still participate in that program. It would just be subsidized further so bring their costs down. But I'm not talking about spending money, spending that as tax money, no.
No, but if it's inevitable that this program is going to generate some money, then we need to have a philosophical discussion. And that's why from an academic standpoint, I asked you.
I'm a little leery of it, that-
I am too.
Especially if the money increases, then we're going to be like, oh, okay.
I am too. This is not supposed to be a money grab, but from an academic standpoint, to understand why we voted to do this thing, probably useful.
So exactly what you were just saying. That's why I don't think we should be buying anything. If we're going to do anything with it, I like the mayor's idea, philanthropic things. Make it sound like we're charitable, I mean, not even sound like, be charitable. Yeah, you know.
How do you select which not-for-profits that you are going to do?
Whichever ones we want to, because we can.
Careful not to alienate other not-for-profits that you don't.
We can rotate. It can go every couple of months and they can apply. Maybe everybody, you know, make an application process. There can be applications for it.
What should the criteria be?
The criteria for it? Well, that's a good question. Something that would be on my pay grade and staff can determine. And give us options.
And which, and which items on there would you, would you say we should, we should rebate? Which is why I brought up only-
Any of those items.
The first one's a good one. The x-rays on your teeth, that's a good one. You might not pay for the, for the crown or you might not pay for the, for the filling, but if you at least get them x-rayed, they can all bet.
Somebody already mentioned subsidizing and that's, you're subsidizing people who can afford that stuff. So absolutely not. I don't like any, I don't like a single one of those items.
I'm saying you're subsidizing the things. If you would help people at least open their eyes to understand that they have problems and that is a huge barrier to even participating in this discussion, that, that in itself would move the needle. I couldn't afford to do an energy audit and a friend of mine did like a, like a pretend one. We learned a lot, a lot from that.
I don't find, I don't find many people in the community really worried about that though. I mean, especially when they're looking at it.
I saved $500 a year in my heating costs the first year from making one simple change in my home, which was to put insulation. Or my builder told me I had it and I didn't actually have it. And I didn't know any better because I was not smart enough for no word to look.
Everybody I've talked to, and I mean everybody, has called this a bag tax, including the cashiers that are at the, at the counter.
Sure.
So I mean, it's not a good, it's not a good perception. And so in order to alleviate that perception, I think we need to think of more philanthropic things than planting trees on parkways. And also, I completely agree with Alderman, you were, this needs to be revisited. As soon as we have data- And also I completely agree with Alderman, you were, this needs to be revisited as soon as we have data that allows us to do so.
And not too soon to know whether that was successful or not.
As soon as we have data that allows us to do so.
Fair.
And I think one metric that we will have is what the revenue is. After this program's established, if we see that revenue increasing, that means we're not being successful. If we see it decreasing, then we continue that plan.
It's gonna be hard because it's based on missing two stores, two large stores, the initial count, the 4 million bags. That doesn't.
We'll just ignore those.
I'm talking about the, I'm talking about the fees we collect. If we start collecting more fees, that means more people are paying the 10 cents to get a bag and more bags are being taken.
What are we comparing before?
From the month before.
Okay.
And that's even, that's even difficult with these swings that happen on retail. And I know that as, as a retailer now. Dustin?
Following up on, on Councilman Malley's comment, most of the pushback I've gotten on this is the fact that we don't know where the money's going yet. And that I think is what people are concerned about. The, what, what will this be used for? And if it is a good use, I think more people would be on board. And I think a philanthropic option would be good. You mentioned doing a sort of like unofficial audit on your home recently. What was that process like? And could we create a program that does that? Like just a self-guided audit that some of these funds could.
Do you wanna know how many beers we had before we decided to do this thing? You know, we, we tried to mimic it as best as we could. And we used a thermal glass system to look at areas that you normally wouldn't pay attention to. And we saw where the heat was leaving in February, where it shouldn't have been leaving. I was wearing, I was wearing a neck brace and I mean, like I had nothing better to do. So it was a very useful exercise.
It's a tool that you can buy at the store.
Dustin, I appreciate your, your response there, but I would also say, I would respond to that in that if we tell people, hey, this is what the revenue's going for. And, and they say, oh, I support that, so I'm gonna buy a bag.
Then we can't do it.
That's gonna be counterproductive to what we're trying to do here.
Give them a place to make their, their contribution up.
That's why my, my pole point is I don't wanna focus on the revenue here. That's, cause that was never our.
That's why this, it's like, even if, keep those, yes, if it's about the environment, then rich, poor, whatever, should have incentives to decarbonize.
Good evening, Susan. Did you?
I, I worked with the committee and Carolyn on coming up with these ideas. I'm a little, I'm concerned because we, we need to keep in focus here that the purpose of this fee was our commitment to the greener regions compact and to a climate action plan. And in order to have that be effective, we need everyone here on this council.
What does this do to impact the environment?
What does it do to impact the environment? It, it eliminates, it, it hopefully eliminates bags.
Hopefully.
It's been proven in other municipalities. So you eliminate bags, which means you eliminate the manufacturer of the bags and all of the pollution that's resulted from that. You eliminate debris hanging from the trees, but you see up and down I-88 as you go to Chicago. You, all of these programs are designed, so we get this money. What money we get, we're going to be, every single one of them goes towards the plan. The trees are things that are going to help everybody.
Right, but we're working towards $0. That's what I'm saying.
Right, but in the meantime. But, but we were, we were tasked, we were tasked with, give us some suggestions as to what we're gonna do with this money. And so our goal was to do environmental type things and things that are going to help mitigate the effect of climate change. Trees is one of them. Getting people to move towards electrical use is another. Getting people to be aware of what the waste and how they should sort their waste is another one. Having them have education as to what to do. My concern here is how this program was rolled out. To have people call this a tax, to have the cashiers call it a tax, some of you call it a tax, is horrifying to me. Because it's not a tax. The city is not relying on this money coming in at all. That is what a tax is. This is a fee to incentivize people to not use it. I'm sorry, but I've been, I just was at Jewel today. They have a handwritten poster saying there's a bag fee. I went to Trader Joe's, theirs is on their whiteboard or their, your blackboard. I have not seen a single poster in town. Now they may exist, but I, I have not seen one. If people are confused as to why this bag fee is being done, we've done a poor job of explaining it to our residents. And that's what that education program is partly for, if we do this, but I think it should be done anyway. So we need to get everybody behind this thing because that's the only way we're gonna reduce the number of bags. And these do work. I was just in Montreal and I was there for about four days. And it dawned on me about the third day, I did not see a single person with a store bag. Not a single person. They all had their canvas bags. I never saw a single plastic bag hanging from a street sign or a bush or a tree or littering the park. It can be done because they have a, a, an ordinance of some sort or law of some sort that bans all bags. Now you didn't wanna go for a ban, which is fine, because there's some, you know, concern about whether that would be effective or not. But we've got to get behind this thing so people do what it is designed to do. And that's, that's the way I feel about it.
Staff's perspective, we've been nothing but positive in our communications with all of the retailers to explain the reasons why the, why we are putting it in place and the environmental reasons why we're putting it in place. We hired a private consulting firm to develop an educational campaign prior to implementing this tax. I don't think I've met a person in the city of Batavia that didn't know that the fee was coming.
I, I know people have, knew it was coming, but I, I've not seen, as I said, I've not seen the posters anywhere. You know, so, you know, and I think it behooves all of us, you know, so when you're there and you hear the cashier say, oh, it's a bag tax, you gotta say something and say, no, we're trying to get people to bring their own bags here. Or pick up one of the boxes that Berkeley's has or whatever, you know? We, or take it without a bag. You know, if it's, if you're going to the hardware store and you're buying a little plastic bag with three screws in it, just take it, you know? So that's all.
I can really appreciate your words, by the way. And I, and I want less bags. I just wanna put that out there. I wanna make sure this works, right? And I don't want, I, I'm, I'm not a tax guy, you probably hear that through my voice, but it's a perceived tax. And I, I know we don't wanna call it that and it's, and it wasn't sold as that, but it's perceived as that. And when our constituents perceive that, that's their world, that's their reality.
And we have to, we have to.
We have to educate.
We have to educate them. We have to say, no, I understand why you think it's a tax, but when you think about it, you've got an alternative. When you're paying a tax, when you're paying your real estate tax or the sales tax, you can't say, oh, just please leave that one off. I don't wanna pay that. Here you can do that. All you have to do is take your bag with you and you don't have to pay for it.
But how do we know that less bags equates to this and not less people shopping in Batavia? We have to look at revenue dollars per store. We have to, I mean, there's so many different things, right?
I don't think there's.
And I'm hoping that everyone, everyone's correct. I'm just saying, these things, I just haven't heard the metrics. That's why I asked my question before, what the metric was.
Our retail dollars that come in, the retail tax dollars.
Right, tax dollars are gonna tell you whether people are leaving or not, but.
Right, that's what I'm saying. We'll, we'll have to look at, at those numbers as well in conjunction with bag usage.
The numbers in general, I'm not being dismissive, the numbers in general don't support that. You, you will run into all 12 of these people online, who I've fought with all 12 of them extensively, say that, well, so long, Batavia needed one more reason not to shop here. I ran into two of them at the store and I don't, and I don't go out very often. So I was able to call them out to their freaking faces and be like, ew, that took two days.
Cause they realize they spent more money going to the other community than either taking a bag and not paying it at all.
So even more so, it looks like a power grab, because they're like, I'm still getting the bags. It's not about the bags, it's about the money. That's what they think.
And I talked to them about the app, Gas Buddies, so I could show them the nearby Batavia gas station, which supposedly charges more in gas tax, which was lower than the gas at the other community where they went to go buy gas. It's a 25%.
Before I was on council, I thought it was a tax.
So it sounds like we're not, I mean, tonight we could debate whether it's a fee or a tax or whether we should have it or whether we shouldn't, or how we should measure it and when we should measure it. But tonight's discussion was supposed to be about how to allocate the revenue.
Sounds like we, we have some workshopping to do. But in general, in general, we are supportive of taking the money that we don't really want to get, but are getting towards environmentally sensitive issues. Are we all in agreement on that in general? Does anyone here have an idea of something that is not philanthropic?
Something that just seems as if we're giving it away, because I think that's what we should do.
Can I just make a comment? Thank you, Laura. That's exactly what I was gonna say, like tonight is about a discussion about the bag fee revenue. But I think Carolyn brought this up earlier. We just, it needs to be a program where the money could fluctuate, not, you know, so if this is going towards senior citizens, we don't want them to become dependent on, or a program to become dependent on money that might not be there in a year. If we can really encourage people to not use single-use bags. So any program I think that can fluctuate and with decreasing funds, hopefully, I think is what we need to really focus on.
And RCP is a perfectly worthwhile organization. There are a lot of great organizations in the area that have a closer tie to direct environmental issues. That's definitely, I don't think something to discuss. Mark?
Yeah, two things. One, I have been to three stores, Menards, Trader Joe's and Berkeley's. They all asked me the question, do you wanna buy a bag? Which I was very happy to hear that, because I know in some cases, the stores just don't even say anything. So I don't know what everybody else's experiences are, but some are actually saying, do you wanna buy a bag? So aside from that, I would like to say, I would like to move that, like on our next committee of the whole meeting, I would like a resolution that says, or an ordinance that says that this fee is going to a fund.
It does in the ordinance already.
It's already, okay. Do we have that, is it, and I don't remember, so apologies, because I obviously didn't remember it was going to a new fund, that, that fund can only be spent on environmental issues? Is that specified? Or are we just saying, hey, we're pushing it over here because that is the key for the residents, that they wanna know how it's being spent?
We will fail our first audit in 15 years over this.
The intent of that to say that the money that's like, it will be put into an environmental fund. To me, that connotes that that fund is going to be used on environmental things. It's not an environmental fund that pays for personnel or something like that.
Yeah, I understand that. I guess, can we, can you just, wherever we have that, because I, it would take me forever to go find it in minutes.
You'll see it on the financial report, there'll be a line item for it with a.
What we wrote, what we voted on, I would just like to see that language. So if we have to modify the language to say, oh, it doesn't specifically say that we're only spending this on environmental. It was just, that was the thought, that that's how we were gonna do it. I would just like to see it in actual writing. Then we don't have to decide what we're doing. And if in five years from now, we're like, holy crap, we got a million dollars, how are we gonna spend this million dollars? And we're gonna go build a solar array, start building a solar array, whatever. I wanna, I wanna make sure the language is clear because we don't have to make a decision now.
Send Peggy an email tonight.
Well, no, if it's codified, that's the language I'm looking for.
Ask her, if she can show you the line on the report for next month, because there will be a new line.
Sure. But I'm also looking for the, how we've codified this, the ordinance.
Easy. What's on the other hand? Yeah? For the first one.
It's 9/27.
Uh, yeah. Don't recall. I, yeah, I, oh, actually here, yes. I'm on board with Tony. I don't want, we don't wanna be collecting money. We don't want this to be going towards something that needs to supplement something. We don't want to count on this income because we want the income to be nothing eventually. But people do need to know that it is going towards something good, so.
With four and a half million bags, we've got a lot of work to do. I am astonished.
Also, was Walmart included in that, Laura? You said three major, oh, they did report their numbers.
Walmart's, so Walmart's data, I would put low confidence in what they provided. It was substantially less than a place like Jewel. So I don't have, so for our purposes, we really don't have data from Walmart or Target in the levels that I can feel.
I'll be honest, I thought, well, I really did. I thought it was gonna be like eight million bags.
It probably is low.
It might be and we have a half million dollar fund to distribute.
I hope not.
I hope not either, but it sounds like we do.
I hope it comes in at $100,000 to start off with.
I thought it was 60, I thought it was 60,000. I did not realize these numbers were gonna be anywhere like that.
$270,000.
I had no idea. We have a lot of work to do and thank you for all of the work that you have done so far to get us to this place. You have moved the needle already. This is the most our community has discussed these issues in the 13 years that I have been here. So only good things can come from the discussions we've had so far. So this is definitely a step in the right direction. If we need to revisit this as a, as a group or have an IPA, if you like an IPA, or what's your favorite drink? Yeah, what are you doing? Feel better when it's fermented, but okay.
So at this point, staff does not have direction on how the fee will be used. Is there anything that you, you want to do at this point? Or do you wanna wait until budget time or what, what do we wanna do?
I'd like to wait to see how much we get before I decide, because I'd hate to say a program besides trees and then all of a sudden say, we're gonna do this great program and then we fall short. And then residents are gonna be like, well, you said you were gonna do this. And we're like, we didn't know. And then they yell at us because we didn't have the crystal ball to decide, you know, to know.
One of the things you could do is as a percentage, one of the things that I just wrote down as an idea, 80% for trees, 10% for education, 10% for RSVP, because I really don't think that staff has the time to run a, the philanthropic donation program. And if you wanna designate that it's for another philanthropic organization in future years, we can pick one per year.
I don't even know the mechanics of it, but I liked Alderman, yours of rolling it over and, you know, putting it hard in the language that, listen, this sits here until you have an environmental project that you wanna work on.
There are 100 501(c)(3)'s within a three-mile radius of Batavia that would all want a piece of that pie. I will form a 501(c)(3) to get a piece of that pie.
So the, the direction to staff is just to, at this point, let it accumulate in the environmental management fund.
Oh, we need to change that. I would like to point out that, because I know you were asking the question, there is, that's the definition right there. Cities Environmental Management Fund, which was created for this. And so the Cities Environmental Management Fund is undefined.
That was, that was, that's great, but we don't say what we're spending that on.
So maybe the direction to staff would be, let's define what the Cities Environmental Management Fund is.
I think you guys are the policymakers and you guys define the environmental management fund.
Maybe that should be the next discussion.
I thought we already did that.
I'd wait to see how much we bring in to begin.
At budget time, you define that when you look to see, how are we spending that? And you see, oh, why are we spending that on, on somebody's new car?
I brought, I brought up the, I'm spending it on bike and pet and you could say, mm, we don't think bike and pet is environmental. That's something totally different.
That's fine. So we define it later.
Yeah, and I think that's, that's okay. So when people ask, you can say.
This is in our environmental management fund.
Environmental management.
Which is undefined. Sorry.
I mean, if we accumulate, which I hope we don't, a couple of years, years down the road, maybe there's something that we could do in the river or something to.
We have something called the building fund and that too is undefined, but it's to maintain our buildings.
Which is how we had money to do all of the improvements that we did and eke a sign out of it.
All right. I would like to say how some of the retailers have pivoted on this and allow the customers to choose whether they purchase a bag or have the items brought out to their car and put into a container in their car. So kudos to those retailers that did that. Additionally, there are some national retailers not in Batavia that are charging for fees. And these are large retailers very close to stepping over the boundaries where they will charge for a bag. So I think this is something that is going to come out, especially with the national retailers, that it's going to pick up because many of them that are in communities that charge fees, you know, offer that, they're going to take advantage of that.
About buying a store branded bag, you mean?
No, making, saying, do you want a bag for 10 cents? There was a horrified teenager that had to carry a large load of clothes out because he didn't want to carry, buy a bag for 10 cents. So he was carrying out a large load of his clothes because the retailer was charging 10 cents for bags. Right? I, I mean, there's times I forget my bags and I just wheel out the cart and schlep the stuff in my-